Try one more time, John.
All right. Danae, you're all right? All set? Okay. Thank you for your patience. We were just doing on, came out of a non-public meeting, so we'll get started with the public part of the meeting now. So I want to say thank you to everyone for coming this evening. I know everyone is here tonight to address some important issues, and we want to make sure everyone who wants to speak tonight is able to. Therefore, we're going to ask for one speaker at a time to approach the microphone, and each speaker will have approximately three minutes to speak. We can be flexible for each speaker to make sure they can finish their comments. But we want to make sure that everyone has a chance to speak and be heard tonight. So if a speaker has any follow-up statements, we ask they wait until others have had a chance to speak first. Also, if your statements are repeating what other people have already said, we ask that you keep your comments brief so we can make sure we get through everyone who wants to speak again. We do see everyone in the room, and we appreciate the importance of all the matters that are occurring right now. And please remember, this is a public comment session and not a give-and-take conversation with the school board. We will listen diligently and ensure you're heard. So, thank you. So we will go into the public section, and if you want to approach one at a time to the microphone to have your statement, if you have anything in writing, you can give it to Danae afterwards, so it would be easy for her to add it to the minutes. So. And when you approach the microphone, please state your name and where you live.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Chris Ager. I live at 4 Edgewood Run here in Amherst. I just wanted to thank, thank the high school administration, the staff and the students and the participants in the Veterans Tribute on November 10th. As a veteran, it was very moving, very respectful, and you could tell the preparation of the students. It was fantastic. I don't have children in the schools right now, but it gave me a lot of hope and confidence and cheer in, in the students. So I just want to thank you publicly for a very well-done presentation, and the chorus and the band were absolutely fantastic. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes. That was the warm-up comment, and I'd like to thank him for his service. And my name's Anna Goulet-Zimmerman. My daughter Merlin is a senior at the high school. I live at 22 Veterans Road here in Amherst, obviously. I would say that the band being involved in the Veterans Day experiences every year that we've done, some of the parades honoring other veterans, people who've lost their lives in wars, is a big part of what they have done ever since, gosh, even the middle school, but certainly something that has been important since here. And it's just one of the many, many, many examples of the importance of Carl Benavides in the children's lives, in the skills he's taught them, in their abilities to succeed. I wrote you all a letter that I hope you got the other night, which included some letters of support for him. I realize that this isn't an action that is before the board at this time, but I would like the board to be pushing for answers, be pushing for resolution, be asking questions, because as I think you all know now, hopefully you knew before, but certainly as you know now, there is no one but this board that can actually terminate Carl Benavides from the school. So he is currently an employee, as I understand it. This limbo of him not being here, we have a sub for who knows how long. We have another teacher who's going to be coming in, who also has some band experience, but is not, not filling that position, as I understand it, in January. It's just not, this limbo is not good for anyone. It's not good for the students, who are wondering what's happening? Is he coming back? Why were they told he resigned? If he's not resigned, why isn't he here in our classroom? It's not good for the teachers, new or old. You have, you probably have a handful of teachers here who are brand-new, who hoped that this would be where they were going to stay for their entire careers, and are looking at the turnover and looking at what's happening to this teacher who's been here for 21 years, and wondering, is Sahigan really where I want to stay? Because is my future secure if I stay here? Or is one transgression that, to my knowledge, doesn't even violate a policy, is that going to get me just out, out without a job and without further discussion? Then you've got the old teachers, who have given their lives to this school, their careers to the school, and probably have similar concerns. Carl, of course, is also left in limbo. I can't speak for how he feels right now. I have not had any recent communications with him, but he is the, he is the other, obviously, impacted person. So all I ask is that you, as a school board, get to decide the kind of board you're going to be. You know, are you a board that is relatively passive? That rubber stamps the things that are sent to you? That you accept what's told to you? Are you a board that asks probing questions? That really, really, really investigates what's going on? That asks for answers? And I'm really hoping you're the later, and that you can help us bring some resolution to this and get Carl back in the back classroom sooner rather than later. Thank you for your time.
Peter Klopka, 18 Waterview Drive. This will be just the facts. But I don't, I don't know if you can hear me, John, but just a quick thanks to John Glover for clarifying the process to me and inspiring me to my first act of civil mischief. So, members of the school board and fellow citizens, I'd like to also make a statement regarding the circumstances surrounding the disposition of Carl Benavides and his employment at Sahigan High School, and to urge you to take this matter up in whatever capacity you can. Carl's been absent from the classroom of the school for many weeks now, and the school administration of Adam and Mike provided an email justification for that absence. In it, they claim that Carl left due to personal reasons and has resigned. After learning that this was not entirely accurate, several of the parents of the children in Carl's classes began to work to solicit you for aid in reinstating a teacher who's beloved by the community and has been a pillar of the music department at the school for 21-some-odd years. We have prepared a petition, a petition to reverse Carl's ouster, whatever limbo he may be in. To our knowledge, Superintendent Steele has not moved to have Carl dismissed. Great. Nor has Carl resigned. Also great. This keeps him in an indeterminate state in which it's difficult to ask the board to intervene and investigate. That said, there's 1,254 citizens of this town who are aware of the events surrounding Carl's removal and don't want it to proceed. We want Adam to return Carl to his previous role instead of wasting the resources of the school on finding unnecessary substitutes or replacements. We're aware of some of the details surrounding the justification for Carl's indeterminate state, and as stated in the petition, I hope you've read it, we find the insinuations of theft and inappropriate handling of two-school air purifiers to be absurd and laughable, considering Carl's tenure with the school, his reputation and his responsibility for handling music equipment that is in excess of thousands, tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars. Many of us have sent letters to Adam Steele, urging him to reverse course and set things right by Carl, his students, and those of us that are extremely displeased with this overreaction. In many of our eyes, this is exactly that. It's an overreaction that has led to a tone-deaf application of power, most likely due to a difference of opinion that has nothing to do with air purifiers. More likely, it has something to do with a difference of opinion on opposition and budgetary preferences. In conclusion, please take up this matter however you can. Be that adding it to your agenda, investigating the circumstances. This is a very unpopular move by Mr. Steele and Mr. Berry, one that has moved over 1,250 of your 11,000 constituents to voice a protest. I'm one of them. I don't do this. I'm guessing that's somewhere between 15% and 20% of the voting voice of this town. And I hope that carries some weight with you. Based on what we know, we disagree with the administration's actions, and we want them reversed. Please do what you can.
I'm Susan Brody, 22 Simeon Wilson Road. I'll be very specific. What I would like answered is, has Adam Steele made the recommendation to the school board to officially terminate Carl Benavides? If so, will the school board reject that recommendation and push for Carl Benavides to be reinstated to his former position as music director, teacher at Sahigan High School? If Carl has, in fact, not been terminated, we urge the board to act now and not delay resolution any further. We trust, or we must demand, as taxpayers and as band parents and community members, that Carl Benavides be able to return to teaching our music students and get this music program back on track, because we have lost too much. One of the things I would like to say is that, as part of the resolution, the meeting that we had, I think on the 6th, there's reference that discussion of this has been in the works for the last year or so. To have a discussion about a plan that's not fully realized and on paper and clarified before the board, and then to say that it seems like it was supported by board members is very, very misleading. And I have an issue with that, and I would like that addressed. Thank you.
Hello. I'm Tara Pompio, Flint Drive. I work here currently, and I am the parent of two graduates, so I kind of want to speak to the little bit of history. And Carl means a lot to me. On a Saturday morning, back when my kids were young, we were at the Amherst Transfer Station, and there were teenagers hawking high school, Sahigan High School jazz band CDs to drivers in the trash line. How cool is that? So it was so cool that we bought one. And we listened to that CD a lot when my kids were young, and when they got older, each of them played in the band program here with Carl Benavides, the guy who made that album. Carl provides every Sahigan student who is interested in some sort of music creation four years of opportunities to learn, to grow, to challenge themselves, and to succeed. Carl is the reason that my son was able to pursue his love of music, expand upon his talents, develop leadership skills, share the stage with professional bands, and discover new interests while he was here at Sahigan High School. Some of you have kids who played in the band with him, so you know what I'm talking about. That learning and those abilities he developed under Carl's direction are the reason he is where he is now. At Jacob School of Music at Indiana University, under a scholarship, playing the piano and pursuing a degree in audio engineering, he would not be there if it wasn't for Carl Benavides. Carl is a talented, generous teacher who not only coaches his musicians to become the best they can musically, but allows them the freedom to try new things, improve their confidence, and get out in public to perform and promote themselves. Whether it be the pep band at football games, concert band in London and Paris, individual musicians at Jazz All States, new combos at music nights, or kids recording beats in the studio at lunch. Carl Benavides has opened musical doors for countless Sahigan students over the past 21 years. Many of them have gone on to attend and graduate from prestigious music schools, and some are even making a living working in the music industry. Carl would never abandon those kids. He would not steal from them or their school. In fact, he would do quite the opposite and has spent much of his own money to purchase equipment for them, and thousands of hours of his own time outside of the school day and year to clean and maintain that equipment. The charges against him are ludicrous. As families and as a community, we have all benefited from his generosity, expertise, and dedication by witnessing what his students can do in the pit at high school musicals, at all of the Pops and Music Department concerts, and three times a year at his absolutely phenomenal jazz nights. It might seem kind of random that a trip to the transfer station was our introduction to the remarkable music program at Sahigan High School, but actually, it wasn't really random at all. It was simply another example of Sahigan music students under the outstanding direction of Carl Benavides, learning their craft and putting it into practice, not just by playing their instruments, but by getting out there and selling their merch on a Saturday morning in line at the dump to a little kid in a backseat who did not yet know that he would grow up to become a musician. Please bring Carl back. Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment? No? Okay. Well, I want to say thank you to everyone. Thank you for engaging in the process and the public process that this is. Your letters, petitions, voices are all important to, to us and to the entire process. While you do not see anything on our agenda regarding the topic most of you are here to speak about, please be aware that there are required processes and procedures that we must follow. Okay? So I'd like to move on with the rest of our meeting. Mr. Steele, would you like to give us any COVID metric updates?
I would. Thank you, Madam Vice Chairperson. Right now, there are four active cases at Sahigan. The most alarming thing for the community is the test positivity rate by our Public Health Region, which for the first time in almost, I believe, a year, it's over 10% as of Friday. I've not seen the updated numbers for today yet. That is a concern, but nevertheless, we're still have only four cases at Sahigan, which are active, and that's 0.6% of the population.
Any questions for the superintendent? John, do you have any questions?
No.
Okay. Yes.
I'll just say, I've had a lot of days in the state.
Yeah. So I think the state's dashboard has gone through some permutations. For a while, for a month, they didn't have the antigen-plus PCR test positivity rate metric because it wasn't working. The dashboard did go down for a week's time because they had an issue with the provider network being able to provide updates to it. I think the numbers that we pull from our, our school cases still remains our most important metric that we track. And, and then behind that, availability for vaccination, which, as we know, is changing. So I'm not sure. I take, what I think is the state website lags about a week behind reality. So I think that their information, because I've been able to track some of our school cases that pop up, I don't see a change, say, in the Monvernan Town numbers for a week. Well, I know there's been a change, because we have people that live in, in town that are positive. So I think it's probably about a week behind, is my guess.
Anyone else?
The four cases you said leaves us in the green right now?
Yes. Sahigan remains in green status and is nowhere close to being in yellow or orange.
Any other questions? No? All right. So next on the agenda is a presentation by Amanda Delacollie, one of our teachers here at Sahigan High School.
Yes, please.
Turn that bad boy on.
Yeah.
And she is going to give us a presentation on creating effective environments in our Saber Flex classes, which is a question I think some of us had. Amanda, do you want to introduce yourself so people know what you teach?
Sure. So I am Amanda Delacollie. If I have your students in class, they probably refer to me as Mandy. I teach 10th grade English, and I also teach 11th grade World Lit. And I also teach a 10th grade Saber Flex, which is new this year, which is what I'm here to talk about tonight.
I'm going to make sure we connect to those ones.
And I have a slideshow that should be coming up momentarily, I would imagine, over here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, he's not plugged into it right now.
Yeah.
So it beeped. Does it look like it's on? Lights blinking green.
I have my computer, too, if that helps. Well, I can speak to it without the slideshow as well. Yeah. That's. Does this one connect wirelessly? Let me check. Okay. So it's not showing up. So I'll just talk to you guys a little bit about Saber Flex, and if we can get it working, then we can also kind of follow along with the slideshow. So Saber Flex is a course that occurs at the 9th and 10th grade level here at Sahigan. And the purpose and goal behind it is for students to have time during the academic day to develop initiative and awareness as independent learners. So one of the things that we do in Saber Flex is we help kids learn how to actively monitor and navigate their own learning through goal-setting and reflection. So the methodology that I use for goal-setting is the SMART Goal template. So at the beginning of the year, I went over with students what that looks like, how to craft a SMART Goal. I gave them a template that has an example of what a SMART Goal is. And for those of you that aren't familiar with it, SMART, the acronym stands for Specific, Measurable, Attainable, Relevant or Realistic, and Time-bound. And so at first, when I had the students set a goal, I kind of let it be around anything, just to kind of get that process going. And the other key piece here is frequent reflection. So I walked the students through how to reflect on goals. I went through, like, trends that I saw in their goal-setting templates. I gave them a list of guided questions for them to reflect on, where they could pick a question and, and look at that in depth. And this was all done really early on in the process of looking at Saber Flex. The other purposes behind Saber Flex is to give students time to complete assignments with support of a teacher. And these assignments can be based on work that they're currently doing. And I think also the goal is, you know, for eventually them to be able to recover competencies or revise work and resubmit work as well. And also working on self-designed projects. So it could be a passion project or an extended learning opportunity. And so Saber Flex becomes a place for students to be able to do that. The competencies that the course is based on is the Work Study Practice, which we'll refer to as a WSP, of self-direction. And essentially, that's broken down into two components, and one is being able to set goals and create a plan, and the other is to persevere, manage, progress, and behavior. And so when students are in the goal-setting process, they will receive feedback and be assessed on the setting goals and creating a plan aspect. And when they're reflecting on their goals, I assess them on persevering, managing progress, and behavior. One of the things that I really try to stress with them is that I'm not necessarily worried about whether or not you're achieving your goals. The idea is that, like, you be honest in your reflection, because we want them to be cognizant of who they are as learners and how the process is really going for them. In terms of reporting out, the course appears on the transcript in the report card, but it's non-credit-bearing, and it has no impact on a student's GPA. They do get a score about every two weeks that's available for parents to see in Power School and for students as well, although in my class, students also get that score on Google Classroom, so they see it there. So my particular approach to Saber Flex combines regular predictable routines balanced with work time. So at the very beginning of the course, on the first day of school, I did a norm-setting activity with the students where we looked at the purpose of Saber Flex and kind of developed an idea of, within the parameters that needed to be there, what do we want this place and time to look like? And so the consensus was that, overall, we want the time to work. You know, the kids want time to get stuff done. But I also think that it's important that if we're building students up as independent learners, that we had to have some kind of grounding to do that. So what I did was I created a Monday through Friday routine schedule for us, and that would take roughly two weeks to get through with our schedule. So it's like, one week, we'd meet Monday, Wednesday, Friday; the following week, we'd meet Tuesday, Thursday, just based on the goal-day schedule. So on Mondays, our focus is mindfulness. And so we open up with, like, education about mindfulness on that day, or we do a quick mindfulness activity or any combination of those two things. On Tuesdays, our focus is like a takeaway. And so I try to open with new learning for the students that they can take with them and apply as needed. On Wednesdays, it's just Working Wednesday, which means they have that whole block of time to get some things done. On Thursday, we have, like, Thoughtful Thursday, and so that's like food-for-thought type things. It could be something to think about, something to reflect on. Like, one time, I showed a video on gratitude and its benefits. I've also gone through, like, how to set a professional email and walking them through those types of things. And then Friday, our focus is following through. So on Fridays, we focus on something we need to follow through on. It's also kind of our given time to reflect on those SMART Goals, because in order for SMART Goals to be effective, regular reflection is important. And I, I have some examples of, like, specifically things that I have done on each of these days. So I actually did some, well, I looked up some research on mindfulness. I didn't do, conduct the research myself, but. And I, I presented to the kids, like, first of all, what is mindfulness? Because I think oftentimes mindfulness is, has become synonymous with, like, meditation. So we talked about, like, what is it? Like, meditation is a form of mindfulness, but it's not the only way we can be mindful. I talked to them about the three areas of the brain that mindfulness can impact, you know, from the amygdala to the hippocampus to the prefrontal cortex and what research suggests around mindfulness and those areas of the brain. And then giving them, like, a list of things that they could do to be mindful, that's not just meditating, you know? So talking to them about, like, mindful breathing or coloring even. So on a Takeaway Tuesday, I had them look at, like, what, when they might need to write a professional email and gave them some resources for them to look at and went over, like, all the different parts of an email that they would need, and had them, like, turn and talk about different emails, which one was more effective, even if they're, like, getting at the same idea. So kind of getting them involved and talking with one another, but that's something that they can take with them and use it when they need it, right? So if they're reaching out to colleges or something like that. Another example that I put on the slideshow was, like, a Thoughtful Thursday. So one time, I had these three quotes that the kids could pick from, and they would identify which one they were drawn to. They would paraphrase it, talk about what it meant to them, and then relate that quote to goal-setting and working towards goals. And they had little conversations about that, and that was, like, you know, 10, 15 minutes at the beginning of class. And then, in terms of, like, helping them follow through, I want them to, like, really reflect on their role in the process. So some of the questions that I ask them are, like, what goals did I set for myself? Were these goals met? How were they met or why weren't they met? What barriers or obstacles did I encounter? What have you learned about yourself and/or your goals in the process? So really trying to get that metacognitive element and getting to know themselves well. So my future. So, my future plans for Saber Flex, now that we have officially had a reporting period, is I want to use their progress reports, which I've gone in and taken a look at for my particular kiddos, and see where they want to go for the rest of the semester. And then have some one-on-one conversations with those students based on the progress report to craft some new SMART goals. And then continue to provide those bi-weekly opportunities for reflecting and revising those goals. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone have any questions? Anyone ask about Saber Flex? Laura?
Do you meet every day? Or is this only like a regular scheduled section? And how many minutes do you meet?
So, it's 80 minutes, and it comes out to be every other day. So, my Saber Flex is first period. So, I see the students every day that we have a first period on the schedule. So, that Monday through Friday takes us two weeks to kind of get through all of those little activities.
How many students do you have here?
I think there's 16.
Have questions? I, so, one of the questions I had, so it's definitely, you know, because when we first heard about Saber Flex, we weren't sure what it was, and some of us thought, oh my God, it's a glorified study hall. Right? But it sounds like there's a lot more put into it than that. So, if there's a kid who wants an ELO, or let's say is excelling in something and wants to go explore, are they stuck staying for that Monday, Wednesday, Friday, Tuesday, Thursday, and can only do those things on the days where you have the working session?
No, so those like, those little activities take no more than 20 minutes.
Oh, okay.
So, the design that we came up with as a group was, and oftentimes, it's like 10 minutes, you know? So, for example, on a mindful Monday, I had them do mindful coloring for just five minutes. And then I talked to them about how, you know, afterwards, that just five minutes of coloring has, you know, research suggests that it has about as much impact as 30 minutes of meditation. So, just kind of giving them like quick little things to help them focus. And I literally set a timer on my phone, and I was like, here, grab any one of these images you like, grab some things to use, we're going to color for... And, you know, just kind of walking them through what mindfulness is, so paying attention to what's happening. But they were done by 8:40 and able to work on whatever they needed. I'm also pretty flexible, like if a kid needs to be somewhere, they don't necessarily have to stay for that if there's something going on, like if they're like, I need to meet with a teacher to make up a test or something like that.
I can go to that. Okay. Thank you. Laura?
So, why don't you focus on your own goal of one work-study practice? Like what, when you look at the curriculum, what maybe accomplishments, what the goals of the student? What, why did self-direction get 80 minutes? I just wonder why so much focus on this one, that you did a work-study practice?
That was not a choice that I made. Like, that was how the course was designed.
No? John, do you have any questions? No questions? Okay. Well, thank you, Mandy. I really appreciate it. Gives us good insight into what's happening in Saber Flex. It was new for us this year, so it's good to hear what's happening inside.
Yeah. Thank you for having me.
Appreciate it. Thank you. All right, moving on, Community Council. Mandy? Doesn't need the button.
So, um, in Community Council, we had a bylaws update, or bylaws change, and it just updated the, um, the language to be in, or updated with our schedule. So, it took out the use of white days since we don't really have those anymore. And it changed it to gender-neutral language, just to make it more easily readable and just better for everyone to feel comfortable. So, we just changed like she/him, or yeah, like she or he to they. We just made it simpler, so that was a quick change. And then, the SAC through Council did a couple of fun things for Halloween. So, we had a costume contest, and this was the first time in all of my years here that I've dressed up for Halloween. So, that was pretty fun. And then we also did door decorating. And the winners for the costume contest and the door decorating both got little prizes that was given through the fundraising committee on Community Council. So, it was a fun holiday.
Great. Thank you. Any questions for Community Council?
Are there other proposals making their way through?
I believe so. We're working some through Executive, so they haven't gone through full Council yet. But those will be coming soon. I'll have more updates on those next time. Today, we just, we had a meeting and we just worked on our committee time, since we don't have anything that is currently ready for Council.
I know there's one that's being discussed. And that's already in process of going through Council, right? You want to give a quick synopsis? Of where it stands?
Yes. I don't know if that one's ready to come through the board yet, so I'm told.
You don't want to?
Yeah. We're told to wait on that one.
All right. That's the one I'm mentioning, I'm talking about. They haven't fully voted, from what I read. Am I right?
Yeah, we did vote on it.
Okay. Yeah, so why don't you give an update on that one? That's, I think that's an important one for everyone to hear.
Okay. Well, it did pass through Council with the amendment of a changed date from what it originally had. So, Council was in the majority, did support that proposal.
So, just to clarify, so valedictorian and salutatorian was in the handbook, and the handbook originally was referencing trimesters, which we have not been on for a number of years now. So, that's changed to semesters. But then the valedictorian and salutatorian, the reason that it had to go through Community Council was, it was determining the valedictorian and salutatorian based on progress reports in the third trimester. Since we don't have trimesters, we don't have the progress reports are the same, since we're on a competency-based system, they had to come up with, what is the proper way not to determine valedictorian and salutatorian? So, they worked through the process, and Mike worked hard with them, and various surveys and communications, and I believe you have mid-April?
Yes.
As your determination date?
Yeah, we came up with the midway point through semester two.
Yeah. So, as close to the end of the year as possible, and announcements get made at Senior Awards Night. So, that is the current update. So, thank you. Appreciate that. All right, so moving on to reports received. Any questions? Do you want to start with the principals' report? I think we'll just pull them out. Principals' report? Do anyone have questions? For Mike? Oh, yeah.
Well, I had a, I had a follow-up on the Council update that I wanted to mention.
Oh, okay.
Proposal.
Yep.
I didn't think that the April date was consistent with our grading system, since Christine Landrell has mentioned numerous times that the grades are not determined until the end, or as close to the end of the year as possible. And I thought they were mutually exclusive to have it in April and then have the grading system that we have. If we had a normal grading system, or... So, I was a little confused by giving that option to Community Council to begin with, that there was, they could pick the date when our grading system precludes that option. So, that was confusing to me. And, and I don't, I mean, perhaps we could ask the teachers if they're capable of, because they're not supposed to have a grade at that particular schedule right now.
In April, because it's the rolling grade at that point.
Right.
Still moving. So, I think what we need to do at this point, I think, well, it's not a conversation for here, but maybe a conversation we bring up, because I know there's a weighted grades issue for next year as well, but that's something we need to work through the process. And I think work with Community Council and work with Mike and find, you know, if we need to make another change for next year. But that can be a conversation we can have, I think, as a group to make sure we work through the community process. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. All right, so...
So, the principals' report. Personal success plans, what do they look like? How are they progressing? Can you provide an example? And how has this changed their classes, opportunities, and insights?
Well, what we've created, at South Heagan, the work around personal success plans for us is taking kind of like the fragmented experiences that a South Heagan student will have and kind of putting them into one. And so, John Barry has worked with the Counseling Office and Shiloh and other teachers, specifically ninth-grade team, or not specifically, but put more time into the ninth-grade experience to, to try to align the experiences that we have. And if you think about it, you know, they have the team experience, they have advisory, they have Division One, they have JLP, they have ELO opportunities, they have senior project, they have personal growth plans. They used to have winter sessions, but because of COVID, we haven't had there that... So, there's lots of opportunities to kind of like tie together. And that's really where our work is focused on. We, the update for us is, you know, we're working on, we're really impressed with Power School and the Student Information System that we use, and the ability to create forms that, you know, can be logged into or housed in Power School. So, you know, we can, you know, have conversations with kids and document that and archive that. So, as a teacher, you can see a, you know, career interest survey, or you can see a student say, hey, I'm this type of learner, and it's just in their system. So, when the teacher has, you know, a kid in class from ninth grade, and/or two years later in 11th grade, that they can see the work that the kid in the student has put together. That's really where our work is around. We have a website that we are kind of like working with, designing. It's been kind of pushed out a little bit. It's not, you know, a place to finalize. But as far as impact on things, it hasn't really impacted like courses or, you know, individual plans at this point. But we are working with the ninth graders, and Tim Cottrell, as the counselor for ninth grade, has had these conversations. But our work is kind of like tying all those things in together.
So, are you using Power School as the platform to document? And that's part of...
Google Docs and the Google Suite, and eventually going to be aligning with, our intention is to Power School, because that's the Student Information System that will, you know, eventually be partnered with Naviance and, you know, Performance Plus. So, it's a good place to house all the information that we need.
Okay. And a follow-up for the, how is it changing how you're interacting with the ninth graders? Like, having this...
There's, there's individual conversations that are being had between Tim Cottrell and students, and then ninth-grade team teachers and students around these topics as they, you know, transition into South Heagan, assimilate into, into high school.
Thank you.
Anyone else have questions? Steve?
So, Mike, thank you for including the staff attendance information in the report. I don't know if it's high or low. It feels high, so I'm going to kind of look at the trend over time. But I'm wondering if you have an opinion about if it feels normal for a school of this size, or...
Mike, you want to jump in?
I'll jump in there. So, this is in response to one of our other boards asked that question about attendance data for staff. And so, we're providing it simply for the boards in sight. We have highly skilled professional instructors that we want in front of students as much as possible. And so, I would hope that this data is not taken out of context, but instead shows it's something that we have, where we can work with our staff to ensure we have more face time with students.
That, that's, that's my thought, is that...
How do we support them?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We, we hire excellent teachers and having them in front of the students as much as possible goes the discussion we had with the Advisory Finance Committee last week.
Indeed.
Anyone else have questions?
I would just ask if we could all do better about speaking more closely into our mics for the people at home.
Mike, can I ask a question? So, first of all, I'm very excited to see that Program of Studies is going to be presented in January, I think is the timeframe, as it looks. So, that's great to see that it's coming out soon. One of my thoughts is, have we, and I don't know if this is something Steve Chamberlain could be involved in, but I know there's new electives over at AMS, including photography, your book, a couple other things that might, that they've not had before. So, I'm just thinking, if we're teaching photography here and they're teaching photography there, are we making sure that there's something new being taught here if we have kids, but yet still having like an intro class? I'm just like, again, it's that alignment piece that, which is why we were excited to have you come in.
You know, and I'm excited to do that and connect, and so are the teachers here and at AMS, trying to connect, so there's continuity and growth, so...
So, that is being thought about what's being offered.
Hundred percent.
Fantastic. So, yes, I'm glad we're thinking about that ahead of time. That was one of my things. Laura, you have another question?
Yeah. How, if you're proposing new courses in January, but we're doing the budget now, that I didn't... I mean, I like the idea of evaluating new, but if we could do it before the budget, we could make sure we have the teachers you need to teach the classes that you...
Yeah. Absolutely. My thought process on it, you know, master schedule is driven by student demand, whether that student demand comes in required classes, or if there's an elective that they want to take, you know? But as, when we, you know, budget, we anticipate, we do our best to try to forecast out and anticipate what we, what we need. And then there's a process that we're going through where, you know, students and teachers had to say, you know, in like course, new course development, and we're working with our Teacher Leadership Group, the Staff Steering Team, to kind of put together, to put together, you know, a program of studies that is, one, you know, based on student interest right now and course requirements. And when, as we decide what's going to get in, you know, right now, we're at the point in the process where there's been a number of courses that have been looked at, and there's been some courses to add into the Program of Studies. There's been some courses to talk about, like we're moving from the Program of Studies. And so, we're in that process right now for the next couple of weeks, working with our teachers to do that. And then we're going to, you know, put out the Program of Studies and allow the students to select courses. And that will drive what courses we offer, and that will drive this number of sections, and that will drive ultimately the master schedule. But it's really, it's tough. And you're kind of anticipating and forecasting out and using the resources that you have in the building to make sure that you offer the right amount of required classes and electives.
You have a follow-up?
Yes. I've asked a couple meetings about the V-Lax classes and E-Start, and do you have the numbers for those yet of...
Thought I provided those multiple times.
You didn't provide them to me.
All right, all right. So, I will look. I don't have them today.
Okay.
All right. I know I have them, and I know I've sent them places.
Okay.
And I'll...
Might have been me. I'll follow up.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Kristy?
If I can?
Yes.
Back to the Program of Studies. I know we had some good conversations about curriculum map, and is that information that you are going to review with the Staff Steering Committee, could that potentially feed into updating the curriculum mapping so that it's more in line with the excellent curriculum mapping of the lower grades?
Yeah, absolutely. And in some of the work that we've done, also informs possible course revision. So, you will see all that in January.
Great, thank you. Other questions? For the principals' report? Okay. One more for the principal?
Who are the non-continuing contract teachers that you have referenced in the report?
Those are teachers that are basically between zero and five years of in their career, whether that's in their career or new to the district, that are working in the building.
Right, but these are ones that are not continuing?
It means non-tenured. State law refers to them as non-continuing contract teachers. You commonly, you'll use the phrase tenure, but tenure is not in the statute.
All right, non-tenured, thank you.
I didn't understand the question. I apologize.
No, you did great.
My own hype man. I got a personal hype man here.
It would be interesting to know how many tenured versus non-tenured teachers we have.
Anybody else before Laura? All right, Laura, one more.
Okay.
All right. Well, I wanted to say something positive, and that was as a parent, the sports registration and payment were all online and they worked really well once I had a little help, but.
Do you have to be reminded to do it as well, like I did just earlier today?
But it was very nice. It's definitely an improvement in the process. I wanted to bring up the youth risk behavioral surveys and that you're, you're calling them valuable. I mean, is this survey required by law? So we're required to administer it?
Yeah, there's a state statute, I forget where it is, somewhere in the 189s, I think, that does not only authorize it as a non-academic survey, but I believe required as well. I'll double check though, to be sure.
Okay, I just don't know if we should be promoting it, especially valuable. And I wanted to know how you were planning to use the results.
Yes, yeah, you want to.
So meetings have begun. We've actually looked at the 2019 data. And we have, we're working on a presentation with the community about areas of focus and areas that we just think need to be addressed. I do think that this gives us unique insight into areas that we can provide programs, either community programs or student program. And I, in the past, it's a unique set of data and how we get a chance to talk with kids and unpack this with kids about what their experience is and what they believe it is. I really have found it is very important to guide on the social, emotional, and school counseling area of program for parents and for students.
Any more? Or can we move on?
Okay.
Steve has one.
Go on over here.
Steve?
Yes.
Could not decode earlier. So you mentioned your Sohagen six student of the month, students of the month, I should say.
Yes.
It'd be nice if you shared the names with us in future months.
I can do that.
We can recognize, the community can recognize them as well as the internal community.
Will do.
Yeah, and those are named, it's monthly, right? Two from each class and they're named at the end of the month?
At the beginning of the, beginning of, yeah. So the nominations are due on the 30th and the Monday after, November 30th will roll out two from each grade at that spotlight meeting.
So the youth risk behavior survey is not required by law. There's an exception to the statute in New Hampshire about non-academic surveys, where the YRBS is named specifically as one that doesn't require opt-in from parents. But instead, we must, if we administer it, we must require parents to opt out. So I thought it was required, but it's not required by law, I don't think.
Okay.
I wanted to clarify that before we moved on.
I just, I've had feedback from various students where they didn't take the survey very seriously to begin with. I don't know if I would take all the numbers very seriously that you do receive. And I found the 24 pages of questions to be rather invasive. And I didn't think that those subjects are really, I didn't find them appropriate. And I like the parent opt-out option.
No, go ahead, Kristi.
Is, just curiosity, I know we have a parent opt-out. Is a student permitted to just opt out or must they have a parent opt-out?
Yeah, I believe so. And we're happy to present more on the YRBS, on how this survey is administered and tallied, taking into account the possibility of non-coherent responses and how we use the data. Happy to, you know, serve the pleasure of Mr. Steele. We're happy to do that. As I said, we are going to plan an event for parents and guardians so they can understand the data. But your concerns, absolutely, it's worth digging in and unpacking a little bit and talking more about it. So thank you very much for raising them.
Yeah, I'll just say that the long, winding timeline of the administration of this helps give us information about which responses are real versus which are random, making a cute pattern with the fill in the blanks or circles or whatever. My, because we only do it every two years, my memories are vague. But it seems to me that the results have been remarkably consistent over the years. And you show real trends and not just random fluctuations.
So I would say, Steve, so if you're going to be doing a presentation for parents and things on it, then I would just suggest that we'll announce it to the school board and they should just go to that same presentation, rather than having to redo a presentation again.
Perfect, thank you.
That would be my suggestion for everyone. Okay.
Any last questions for our principal? Or is he off the hot seat? All right, let's move on. Facilities update, does anyone have any comments about the facilities report that Roger sent? I know we're going to get into, there's a lot of facility stuff in the budget that's been addressed through Sohagen Finance Committee Board. And we're going to be making sure we have an entire list of items. And there was a tour done today, again, with the Sohagen Finance Committee and Board members just to address any outstanding issues. But I do want to thank Roger for all the work that he does do with the money that he has available. And he finds things to do half price when he can. But to make sure that, you know, once again, our rooms are, I think, stable in temperature for once. So thank you, I think that's progress. We don't have freezing cold rooms and boiling hot rooms, so. So yes, there's a lot of facility things that are being done. The last one on the reports received, NWA Growth Summary Report. Any questions on NWA? Who's here to answer questions about NWA?
I was going to quickly do some intro and then answer questions. So just very quickly, NWA, Northwest Education Association MAP, Measure of Academic Progress. It's a worldwide assessment, but most of the norming data is in the U.S. This is a one day, so anytime we have standardized testing, or this is a slice in time. We also, one of the things to take a look at instructional time, we're taking a look at the instructional time that is occupied by our assessments, whether it's state testing, NWA, other screeners. Because as Adam has talked about, we do value instructional time very much. So if you take a look, if you have the document, and I'm sorry, I can't project it. But it's, if you take a look at the first table, which is math, and thank you to Christine, who gave me a primer, as well as produced this report. So if you look at it, the fall of 2020, those are current ninth graders in eighth grade. And so they were at the 78 percentile at the end of, at the eighth grade testing. And now they've now at the 83 percentile in the fall of 2021 as ninth graders. The projected growth for that group from eighth to ninth grade, that current ninth grader, the observed growth was four RIT points and the projected growth was 4.7. So just under expected growth. But with the standard of era, it was very, very close to expected growth. But if you look at grades nine to 10, so in grade nine, so last year in the fall of 2020, they were at the 95th percentile, which is a very, very strong number. And then this year, they maintained that 95th percentile. They grew four points. Their expected growth was 3.1. So even through all of what happened last year, in the math area, the nine to 10th graders exceeded projected growth. So if you just, if you take a look at that chart and there's some history provided, making sure that this chart is, the bar chart is given from MAP, just a reminder that the vertical axis is just a 0.2 spread. So that's why it looks bigger than it, you know, than it actually is. If we just take a look now at the language arts, eight, it was 87 percentile in the fall of 2020. We just went slightly down to 84%. Their observed growth was two, the projected was 3.2. Again, didn't quite make projected growth this year's ninth graders from eight. But if you look at ninth to 10, it was 91%, up a little bit to 92%. With the observed growth was two, they only expected to grow 1.1, so exceeded the projected growth there. So when you take a look, the numbers are right, about 62% met their growth projection in eight to nine in math, 83% in nine to 10. And then 63% eight, nine in the reading. And then 68% in nine, 10 reading. Currently, we use this data as an assessment tool to try and measure where we are. The hope is that we can use this time that we devote from our class and the resources to this as an instructional tool. And the MAP test allows us to dig down and go actually down to the standard on what areas that we can work on. Anne Swift and Dana Kern and I actually met today about utilizing this assessment to try to determine actually what skills are in need of, whether it's saber flex or other instructional changes. So our hope is to leverage this resource as much as possible as an instructional tool, understanding that we lost, we're giving some class time to this. Let's use this tool to highest effective as possible, as effective as possible. And taking a look at some of the other assessments we do, can they be replaced or screeners that we do by NWA for cost as well as loss of instructional time? So certainly in my past life, we, for a while, we did NWA. Their other vendors, Star is another assessment. And of course, we do the state assessment as well. But we are trying to use this to increase our use of this and leverage this resource to some more educational value.
Great to hear. So I'm going to open up for questions. One, before that, though, I just want to say one thing is when you look at our 10th graders, which means they were ninth graders last year, that a lot of this is, considering we were in remote.
Right.
And we were, or we were in dual modality and we did better than the expected project, you know, that projected growth, fantastic.
Yeah, and it was a disrupted year. And that's, that was my reaction when Christine and I talked about it today. That this is good, Dan, let's dig down and use this even more to find out what we need.
Good, did something right. I mean, it's awesome to see. So I want to say thank you to the teachers and to the students. So we're working hard. So any questions on NWA? Laura?
Anyone else?
Go forward first.
Okay. Since we're trying to focus on the individual student, I was drawn to the percentage of individual students who met their projected growth.
Yes.
And I'm wondering where it, back to where it says like comparison periods, fall 2021, achievement percentile, is that based on everyone averaged together or that's the achievement percentile of our district?
So the original, in the original first block, if you will, yes, that is the achievement percentile of the grade.
But it's of our district compared to other districts?
Correct, in the world.
So I was trying to look at more since we're trying to have a more individualized learning. Ninth grade, only 44% of the math students met their growth projection. Tenth grade, only 64% of the math students met their growth protection, protection, protection. And then in language arts, ninth grade, only 45% and 10th grade, only 53% met their individual growth projections. I find those numbers concerning. Although as a whole, we seem to have high averages. I'm concerned about, you know, half of our students not meeting their growth targets. Is there any further breakdown of how we can help those students?
And that's right, that's what we want to dig down and actually look and see which standards weren't and see if there was any systemic approach to standards or skills necessary. So yes, that's the work we want to do. But we also, when we're at 95% high, it's harder to squeeze that growth because we already start so high. But that doesn't mean we don't want to dig deep and find, find out what went, what is going on with each student's response. Not just the overall, but get down to the very skill. Laura, I agree with you.
But 95 is our district. 95 isn't the individual student. We still have half the students not meeting their growth target.
Yeah, I can jump in there. So NWA, their target is that half of your students hit the growth target. They set growth targets so that half of your kids hit that. Unlike the state SAS test or the SAT score where we expect 100% of students to hit that target, NWA specifically makes it so that it's, if you hit 50% or more, your district is doing above average growth. If you're 50% or below, you're doing below average growth. So having something in the 60s is substantial.
Okay. Anyway, we still have half of our students not meeting their growth projectiles, projections individually.
And that could be for variety and could be like just missed it too. But that's why they're digging into it.
Yep.
It's good work, so. So one of the questions I also have, I've had this concern, a little bit of concern about, if you look at, even like the, where the middle school is, and I know they had a whole discussion on their NWA results and coming up. And then I look at what our ninth graders tested at and looking again, that link between middle school and high school and getting a better transition going on. And it's something that, are we working just with the high school or are you also looking at middle school, making sure like they're hitting math and they're hitting their humanities to make sure that they're also achieving?
Yes, spending, spending a lot of time specifically in math. I met with the late, last late start with all the math teachers. So yeah, I do believe that we are focusing on some global, you know, as we, as Steve talked about, our try to really understand where we are in class time, instructional time. But yes, in the transition and beginning is also look at where we are in math program and also the humanities as well with Bethany. So yeah, I do think we're putting our energies in the right places.
Any other questions about NWA? No? Oh, oh, Kristi has one quick question.
Look, I always have to apologize because I think of it last minute. So we have this, these student dashboard kind of things, right, SAS, that would assimilate lots of information. I assume this goes into their personal portfolio. Is there a way to look at how they're meeting competencies in math and English and compare that to how they're testing out? And do you see anything with those trends or have you done that yet?
So like current and the authentic assessments that are, that are in our school compared to the standard? I have not done that yet.
That might be interesting if you could see, hey, these kids aren't meeting growth potential and they're not meeting competencies. That might mean we're not hitting the competencies well.
It'd be interesting to see when we unpack our, is the same results both right in the competencies versus the standards through NWA? Thank you.
Anything else? No? Does John have any questions?
Nope, John looks good to go.
Okay. So FY '23 budget discussion is next, so.
Yeah, I can just speak to it briefly and then I think we want to hear from Advisory Finance Committee tonight, so.
So I just want to give everyone an update. So budget-wise, so after the last meeting when Amy presented the budget, we've dug into all of the different departments with Sohagen Finance Committee. Sohagen Finance has had two or three meetings already to discuss what the outcomes are of their departmental meetings. We had a workshop between the budget, between the school board and Sohagen Finance Committee. So we're really getting some good communication going, digging into the details. And we still have questions, but.
Yeah, no, that.
You want to go ahead?
Yeah, that was basically going to be what I said, but there. But that's fine. So yes, we, there have been a number of questions from board members, from Advisory Finance Committee members that have gone into the budget file. I think we've answered most of them. There are a few lingering questions for administrators to take a look at, but I know everyone's working very hard and I want to thank all the building and SEU admin for addressing those questions and concerns. So there are a few items on, in the budget file. They really mostly have to do with adjustments to the default. We can talk about those at the budget workshop if we want, that's fine. Or we can talk about them tonight. But I, in terms of the process, we have Advisory Finance Committee here tonight who is going to provide us, provide the board with a preliminary report. They didn't anticipate being quite ready to provide a final report. So we do have the budget workshop. And at that meeting, they do plan to provide the board with their final report. So. So in terms of process, the board should be prepared to make final decisions in December so that we can prepare for the public hearing. I'm anticipating four warrant articles, including the election of officers, but it would be the budget. It would be a decision on capital expenditures, an appropriation into the Expendable Trust Fund, and also a decision on the turf field. So those are the, really the three items for the board's consideration. So I guess Stephanie, with that, I would probably ask you introduce, to introduce some, Dan and his committee?
Yeah, so Dan Veyou is here tonight. He is Chair of the Sohegan Finance Committee. And if you would like to come to the microphone and give us an update on where your committee stands.
Like Amy and Stephanie said, we, we've got a late start this year, and our last subcommittee meeting was, was on the 10th. And I received the last three reports from those subcommittee meetings this afternoon, and I quickly tried to put together a very preliminary status report of where we are and some of the highlights of the individual reports. It's not ready for primetime, but we, it'll give you an idea of where we stand at this point. Just a quick introduction. I'm Dan Veyou, I'm the Chair this year. In the room, we also have John Boquet, Joel Gordon, and Jeannie Lute. Not here, Christine Grayson, Howard Brown, and Peggy Harris. Quick rundown for people who don't know what the Sohegan Advisory Finance Committee is. It's made up of residents of Amherst, Mount Vernon, and we all have a variety of backgrounds. We're not all finance people, and we all take a different personal approach to our individual, according to our individual perspectives. So we're not always looking at it from a financial standpoint. Everybody has their own little quirks. They, they look at it when they review the budget. The Finance Committee is asked to review proposed budget details and ask questions and make recommendations to the voters as to whether to support or oppose the proposed budget. We try to look at the budget in the following terms. Due diligence, have all the spending proposals been carefully examined and evaluated, and any alternatives considered before they were submitted? A fiduciary role, other proposals contained in the budget, the most responsible use of public resources, is the school protecting the investment the taxpayers have made in school personnel and facilities? Consistency with the vision and stated policies. Finance Committee tries to take into account whether the proposals in the budget are consistent with the stated goals of the school. The school administration and Sohegan Cooperative School Board have created various plans for the future of the school, which are communicated in terms of the school vision and the, the various supporting policies and goals set by the board. Consistency with the Sohegan Constitution and mission statement. Sohegan High School was established to operate under a set of guidelines that are unique in public schools. The Finance Committee feels the Sohegan Constitution should be a reference guide for establishing new policies and goals. Sometimes it's necessary to change the character of the school by, by updating these policies, and we feel it's essential that the Constitution and mission statement be updated as well to reflect those changes. Most of the budget, the last two years that I've been on the board, on the committee, most of the budget is very straightforward. There's really not a lot of gray area. It's pretty easy to interpret, and things are, you know, pretty straightforward as far as what you would expect in a school. The areas that we look at, like special education, which is one of the most straightforward budgets, areas of the budget that we can look at. It's mandated by law in most cases. It's dictated by the needs of the special ed students, and there's not a lot we can say about it. Most of it's private and confidential, and we see the numbers, and that's about it. So we know that Meg Beauchamp has a lot of great ideas, and she's done a lot for the school, and she's had some great policy changes that have saved the school a considerable amount of money. And this year is, is no different, and I think we can get into a little more of the details later on at the budget workshop and in the final report. Facilities, I think everybody mentioned, everybody's impressed with Roger Preston's work in facilities, and he continues to work through the issues. The school obviously has been neglected for a while and has some longstanding issues that get into the fiduciary responsibility of, are we protecting our assets and our investment in the schools? And Roger has been instrumental in identifying the deficiencies in the school and coming up with a plan to fix them. Food service and transportation Roger is also involved in. He's helping to come up with a plan for maintaining and replacing the 20, 30-year-old equipment in the kitchen and, and making sure that everything is in working order. Athletics, the major change this year that is the, the fact that we're going with an in-house trainer for the athletic program. We, we used to contract with a company that was kind of, had some dubious policies that we no longer wanted to deal with, so we hired our own in-house trainer. So that's reflected in the budget, and of course, the funding for the turf field. Curriculum, as usual, the curriculum budget, which is the faculty, is in flux again this year. Teacher salaries are, the budget for the teacher salaries is down $146,000, reflecting teachers at higher pay retiring and being replaced by teachers at lower pay. It's part of the long-term restructuring plan of the school. The administration budget is, is been the sticking point this year. The, the, the role of new proposed position, the domain leader, has kind of eaten up the better part of three meetings, about six hours of discussion, and we're still going on it. The admin budget is set to increase by about 8.3% in contrast to the declining faculty budget. That represents about $263,000. Some of the changes are due to the assessment from the SAU, which is moving a, an Assistant Director of Special Education from the Amherst School District to the SAU, which makes perfect sense when you hear the rationale, a lot of students from ASD are coming up to the high school and, and we still have a lot of students in the ASD and, and Mount Vernon where it makes sense to have that person in the SAU. We, like Amy said, we have a budget workshop on the 29th where we hope to have final decision and be able to work through any, any last minute issues. We took a sense of the committee, and five of the seven members said they could not commit to voting for the budget at this point, simply because of the, too many questions and too many outstanding issues around the domain leader position. And that's, I'll have, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to.
Have questions for the Sohegan Finance Committee right now? Because I know we have a budget workshop the Monday after Thanksgiving.
Right.
Is our next one. Where we'll get the board and Finance Committee together, because I think it's great conversations that we have, and everyone understands where different perspectives and concerns.
Right.
So I, yeah, I love those workshops that started, it's last year, I think was the first year of those.
Yeah, they went really well last year, I think.
Yeah.
Valuable.
Yeah. So thank you. I appreciate all your, everyone's hard work. I know I've.
I've seen, I've seen you work diligently back there. Do you have anything you want to add to the?
Thank you. All right. So does anyone have any budget discussions they'd like to have tonight? Do we want to save them for the workshop? Is there anything? Because I'm thinking the workshop, I just want to make sure, does anyone feel something needs addressed right now?
I would like to see in writing, explain the default budget calculation. Doesn't have to be at this moment, but soon, like I, this is something I don't know that much about. So, because there are lots of positions. Amy says, for example, the Assistant Athletic Director was not in our FY '22 budget, so it shouldn't be in the default budget. And then Amy replied, it is in our budget, but it wasn't, so.
The, which position, Laura?
The Assistant Athletic Director.
Yeah.
You know, I looked at the, I looked at the FY '22 budget, and it was not in it. And I don't understand how.
So there, there is a proposed changes page in the FY '22 budget file as well. So if you look at just the budget file, you're, you may not be seeing everything that was reflected. So just like in, in this budget, if someone were to go into the budget file, they wouldn't see some of the changes that are being proposed on the proposed changes page. I can show it to you.
That was not in the budget. And I know for a fact the Science Domain Leader was not in there.
So I, can I, can I interrupt you for one second? Because I think what it is, because we, a couple of us were talking about the default budget calculation, and is if we can get a real understanding of how you calculate the default budget. Because I, I mean, I understand that you take last, last year's budget, remove any of the one-time charges.
Yep.
You can remove those retiring positions. You add in any contractual obligations.
Yep.
The question comes down to is, there's a couple teachers, or a couple positions, so, facilities, I think there's a, there was a head grounds, well, it was a reclassification. The head council was in there.
Right.
But we have a second one being asked for, and a second facilities. Those should be pulled out at default.
And they are.
Are they? Because it says yes on the personnel default.
Yeah.
It says yes, so that's why I think, I think that's what the concern is, that we don't understand what's in default, what's not.
Yeah.
We need that, so maybe you can walk us through that.
Sure, I can show you the, the section where they're pulled out.
I think the default calculation, us going over that during the workshop would make a lot of sense.
Okay.
Understand what's in there and what's not.
Sure.
And, and then the concerns about what you saw, like, like the Science Domain Leader, should it be, now, it's, again, it's, is there, if it's taking the place of a teacher in the default budget, should it go back to the teacher position? And that what we would estimate the salary to be versus, those are the gray areas, right? So I think we want to make sure that we're all on the same page in what's in there and what's not.
And some of those are going to be gray areas, and the board is going to have to make that ultimate decision, so.
So we're going to have to go through those one by one, I think, in the workshop.
Like, when I look at the FY '22 budget, the chorus director was third time, and you have it full time.
Yeah.
In the default budget. And the taxpayers never got to vote on that. The board never got to evaluate that.
Those are the questions. We were talking about it, yeah.
I.
It's nitpicky, but I think we want to make sure that we're.
Yeah, I just want to make sure you're careful to look at the proposed changes tab, because what's in the budget file, which may not reflect what actually happened and what's, what was actually ended up being budgeted.
Laura, what would be really helpful is if you've already identified some things, let us know what those things are, so we can come prepared to answer the rationale or if it's a mistake. It shouldn't be included in the default, and it is.
Right, but I asked them on the official.
Okay, okay.
Spreadsheet, and Amy just said, it is included.
So Laura, what I want to do, because I agree with you.
So Laura.
Need to list each one of those and go through.
Right.
On the workshop. I agree.
I just, I just need a.
Understand.
More details, that, an explanation of what's included and why legally.
Yeah. I think that was our biggest, our question. All right. So we'll, we'll go for the workshop and the rest of the stuff. Cool. All right. What do we have? Oh, consent agenda. Do we need to pull out any policies? Or can we just?
Yeah.
The consent agenda, yes.
Madam Chair.
So can we, how about we do this? How about we do each one of those? There's only two items on the consent agenda. Why don't we pull out and ask, are there any questions on the minutes? Can we approve the minutes? Minutes are closed? Shall we just approve those and get it over with? All right. So can I?
I'll move to approve the minutes. Of whatever date that was, 10:25.
All right, do we have a second? We need a roll call votes, and Sean is on there. Are you able to?
Yes.
Okay. George? Steve?
Yes.
John?
John, do you want to vote on the minutes? He's not unmuting, so I don't think he's there.
Oh, okay, I will say grand yes. Laura?
Taylor, yes.
I'm abstaining, I was not here.
Okay. So that's the minutes. Policy. Steve, I see you already have something.
Yeah, yeah, so this, this is real easy.
Yes.
I'd like to, to table two policies, GBCE and GCR. Those are G policies. Before we approve them, they have to run through PPC. So to abide by our PPC policy, we should just forestall those for a month and let PPC give its opinion, and then we can vote on them at the next meeting.
Got it.
There'll be a similar comment when we get to the first reading policies.
Okay. We will pull those, for sure. Are there any questions, or can we go forward with approving the second read list? All right.
I have one thing that I wanted to look at, and that was JIC.
Okay. Yep. And that is page 96.
Thank you. And.
I think.
Yep.
Yeah. So, I see JIC on 96 of today's.
Student, the student conduct policy.
Yes.
Anyway, the portion where it says that the student handbook is reviewed by the board annually, and then the board has the opportunity to modify it or change it or update it. I'd like to put a date on that, like, could we have it reviewed in April? Could it be brought to us? And that could give us time to mull over it, give feedback, or discuss it, and then give feedback, and then have it up to date for when registration opens in August.
Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense. But I want to ask our building level people, when you think about reviewing the handbook, are you able to have it reviewed by April for the following school year? There's got to be a timeline, or is April reasonable?
That's tight, I'm going to say it's, 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 it's tight for this year. However, I think there's a little bit of urgency. The yearbook, yearbook, the handbook hasn't been updated consistently for a while. And so they are, Community Council is, is working with Dean Students John Berry to set up some subcommittees on to, to review the components of it, because part of the process is, Community Council has to be part of that. It's not a glorious part of, of being on community, community council, but we do have to go through that process. We also have to make sure that, because it hasn't been updated, that we try to modernize that, that handbook. So I think in a, in a typical year, yeah, because the, the lifts and the amendments are going to be smaller, right? You know, the updates of the student handbook are going to be smaller. But for this year, they're going to be more substantial. So I want to say tentative, yeah, we should be able to meet that deadline. But no, but there will probably be some substantial changes and amendments and updates to the student handbook based on the fact that it hasn't, and where we're going as a, as a school. So, so yes.
Would it be helpful to say with the target of April 1st or something? You know, something that doesn't sound like a hard and fast, it must be done by April 1st, but makes it clear that that's what the target is? I'm afraid, I picture Mike on March 31st.
Nobody goes home.
Right.
So can we put that in there with, with? So can we put that in there with the memorandum of understanding that this year is an exception? That, because I agree, I think there should be some sort of date in there that we are looking at it, but this year, I definitely think we should give a little leeway, because there is so much going on.
Community Council ends their meetings as well. Like, they have to go until the end of the school year.
Yep.
So that April might be a decent target in the future.
Yeah, I mean, I think April 9th is reasonable. Also, there's going to be, you know, amendments made by administration, you know. We partner with kids, kids are not writing the student handbook by themselves in isolation. And so we need to make sure that it meets the mission of the school, but also aligns with the strategic, you know, vision of SEU 39 and the plan. And I can tell you, I have strong feelings on what a student handbook should look like, and what should, what it should include. And it looks very different than what the current South Hegan handbook looks like, so.
So I am, I'm thinking maybe we should pull this just for this read, get a date thrown in there, and then we can bring it back for the next meeting?
Yeah, and.
I'm happy with you amending it right here, if you'd like.
Where's the date? Do you know where the wording is?
It's the bottom of page 86.
So just, so it says, "A student handbook for each school shall be submitted to the school board for review each year, comma." I would add, with a target date of April 1st of each year.
Okay, are you good with that, Laura?
I'm great with that.
Okay, so Laura, you want to make that motion?
Yeah. Okay.
So.
I would like to make the motion to amend policy JIC to stay. "The student handbook for each school shall be submitted to the school board for review with a target date of April 1st each year."
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
A few seconds, we'll do a quick roll call vote. George?
George, yes.
Coffin, yes.
Grund, yes.
Taylor, yes.
Peters, yes.
Okay, so we will amend JIC to include the additional language.
So John is available, go ahead, John.
Glover, yes.
Awesome.
So would you like like an out-of-order motion to set a separate date aside from policy for this year's review? What day would you like, Mike? You think April 1st for this year? Okay, then, pardon me ma'am, I don't know what I was saying.
We will, we will forget it was ever mentioned. Except it will be in the minutes. Okay, any other questions on the second reading of policies? All right, can we have a motion to approve all policies except, for the second read that are listed, except for GBCE, GCR, JIC? Oh, no, we can do.
And JIC is amended.
JIC as amended.
I'll make that motion.
Steve, motion, second.
Second.
Kristy, seconds. Roll call vote.
George, yes.
Coffin, yes.
John?
John?
Glover, yes.
Right, yes.
Taylor, no, for reasons with specific policies that I've previously stated.
Peters, yes.
Okay, that passes. Five to one, five, five yes, one no. Okay, next is, back to the beginning.
Order of review policies is a first reading.
First reading, all right, so first reading. Steve? What page does that start, sorry?
That starts on 106, I believe.
Okay.
So.
Steve, yes.
Two comments. The very first policy in that section is, doesn't have a title. It is in fact BBAB that we just approved 10 seconds ago. It was accidentally, apparently, stuck in there again without its header on it. So just forget those two pages that don't have a header exist. We already approved it.
Okay, got it.
And so that addresses those two random sets of words that are there. And then it also, we can, I think we should discuss the G policies here, but I'll just note that after they pass our first reading, they should tie off to PPC before they come back for the second reading.
Okay, gotcha. All right, so do we, does anyone have any comments, comments on the two G policies, GBCE and GCR? Let's start with those.
No, these are the first reading ones. GBEA, GBE.
Oh, those.
And GBEBE.
Yes, sorry. GBCD too? GBCD?
Oh, did I?
GBCD, GBEA, GBE.
Oh, yes, I missed it. Oh, good call, Laura, thank you, yeah, GBCD as well.
All right. All right, let me get down to those policies, first of all. Okay. I just have one question, Steve.
Because you were on this committee, right?
Yeah, John was on the committee too.
Oh, and John, okay.
Yeah, but.
Yes.
You can ask me.
So these policies seem, especially like GBCD, seems to be written very specifically and carefully and legally, is that because it's coming from somewhere else, and it's like a required thing, or is this our own craft?
No, that one comes probably 98% out of the law directly, and the other.
It reads like that.
2% from the School Board Association lawyer who touched it up to make it policy-like. Yeah, we, I don't think we touched a word in that. We're too afraid to, because all the lawyers will come after us.
Any other questions on GBCD? No, okay, we'll go on to GBEA, I think is the next one? Yes, GBEA, Staff Ethics. Any questions? Comments, Laura?
I don't quite see how this is enforceable, and I don't know if we should be passing policies that aren't enforceable.
How are they, okay.
So harking back to a very long discussion we had with Adam at the Policy Committee, it's enforceable and unenforceable, both. It's enforceable for certified staff, because the state enforces it for us, pretty much. It's unenforceable for non-certified staff. And the Policy Committee, of course, talked about this for a long time, and we, we supported having the language as it is, to be aspirational and communicate our expectations to the non-certified staff, even though some of the behaviors that are listed in here may not be enforceable through the Personnel Discipline Policy. Adam, you were up for half my explanation, was that sound?
I got it, yep, you're exactly right.
Thank you. I think I said in answering another question somewhere a long time ago, the first step in having a air quotes, "well-behaved" staff, is making your expectations clear. And this does that.
So it's making expectations clear, which I think is very important. But if it's, so how does it get enforced, if it's not?
Well, some of these things are enforceable, obey all local, state, and national laws, right? So.
Straightforward.
Straightforward. Maintain just, I'm just picking random paragraphs my eyes fall on. Maintain just courteous and proper relationships with students, parents, staff members, and others.
So that's the same interpretation that a certified staff gets? It's the same language, right?
Yeah, yeah. Same, yeah, yeah.
We just don't have the states.
It's identical language, yeah.
Statutes basically to back it up, but.
If so, if a member of the, if a student or a parent, or another staff member come and says, you know, "Staff member Joe Blow was not courteous with me, and here are the specifics," that may not be a firing offense, but it certainly is going to be talking-to offense.
Okay. Laura, any follow-up on that? No? Okay, any other comments on GBEA?
Is it referenced anywhere, like, so, for instance, would it be possible to reference it under Staff Conduct, that the ethics are guiding Staff Conduct to tie it better together? Or is it better just to leave them separate and alone?
I can offer my.
Please do.
Yeah, so the state developed their Code of Conduct and Code of Ethics for us, which has been tremendous help, it was just done a couple years ago, a really, I think, big accomplishment, frankly. They bifurcate ethics versus conduct. Conduct, Code of Conduct violations can result in the suspension or revocation of your license. Code of Ethics cannot. So Code of Ethics are things to aspire to be, Code of Conduct are things you have to be in order to keep a license. And so that's really the bifurcation. So an ethics policy here is seen as a lower standard than a Code of Conduct, or a conduct policy violation.
So I think if I'm going.
I'm sorry, and I think that vernacular is well-known by staff. Staff know the difference, because they've been trained, they're required to be trained on the difference between the Code of Conduct and the Code of Ethics.
Do we have any current ethics or conduct policies? Like, it seems like this is to be put into a staff handbook, or provided to the employees every year. Is that something that's already happening, and this is updated language? Or have we not had ethics since 1990?
We have, we have older policies with those titles.
Okay, so you're, this is an update.
Very different.
And you've looked at those?
Yeah, do not quiz me on material that was covered six years ago. Come on, quiz me on anything since the last quiz.
But I know you guys looked at all of that when you were doing.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
That's what I mean, Stephanie.
They did.
There was, there was a side-by-side analysis, and.
Yes, that's right, yes.
And a debate over, do we need to change? Is the modern language better? Are we happy with the old language? All those discussions happened in the Policy Committee, yes.
So I think where the concern might be then is interpretation of, so if there is an ethic, what's considered an ethics violation, who's interpreting what type of discipline? Or what gets handed out? Because there's nothing that says in here anything, you know what I mean?
Yeah, so the answer is, it starts with the supervisor. So if a groundskeeper grabs a golf cart and does wheelies on the front field and tears up the.
Just stamp the turf.
The staff.
Thank you.
Then we have a policy against that, except in the broadest conduct terms about, don't destroy school property.
Right.
But, you know, either the principal or the lead facilities person is going to start, and then it may escalate up the chain of command to brick school if warranted.
So do we need to write anything like that into this policy? Like, it's, or just let it, that's why I don't know where this.
I'll look to the experienced administrators here, but it feels like Administration 101, that that's the way things work everywhere in New Hampshire.
Correct.
You know, sometimes we write out step one.
Yeah, yeah.
Step two.
Well, we have employee rights, we tend to write out employee rights very carefully, so they know what, how it's going to work when something life-changing might happen in a discipline process. This is not, this is like the first step in the discipline process.
Gotcha.
And it's up to them whether they get to the part where their rights need to be enumerated, because something's at jeopardy.
All right. You know, any other comments, questions about GBEA? No? All right, let's go to.
There's nobody left.
GBEB, I don't know. GBEB.
We started giving policy numbers, and everyone flipped.
I know. The eyes blaze over, we run. This is the fastest one I've been to yet. Can I get? GBEB, Staff Conduct. Comments? Does John have any? Oh, yeah.
No, Mr. Glover, you have any comments?
No comment, I had trouble hearing that discussion.
George?
Our, George, enter the mic if you could.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Get really close to it, I think it's.
Sorry. Can you hear me now? Okay. So are employees required to sign the handbook to confirm that they've read it? And, you know, basically are following, you know, at least, because it's not enough to say, "Well, I didn't read the handbook," or, see, it's given to you and.
Correct, there's, and I forget our process exactly, but over the last year, we developed one where employees sign off on number of trainings they do, and a number of policies they read. Mike, you don't remember, I can tell by the look on your face.
Sorry, it's through the district, I know that they monitored that, but we need to do a better job at, for example, with the staff handbook, that we have to be able to do that, we include some of these things in that. And that can be done.
I was, I was sent a big packet of policies.
Thank you, yeah.
As a new employee, a big packet, and there was a cover sheet that said, "I received all these and signed," and I had to send that back to, so as a new, I haven't done this twice yet, but as a new employee, I can tell you, I received all the pertinent policies that would go in this genre.
Yeah.
Sign-off receipt.
Yeah, okay.
Because we're changing so many of them, we probably may be tapping.
Yeah, because in my mind, it wouldn't be a defense, well, I didn't read it, or I didn't see it, well, you're, that's not a defense. So if you signed it, it's incumbent upon you to actually know what's in there, so. Okay.
But if we change the policies, like we're going to math.
Yeah, I agree.
Well, in all actuality, our, like, the PPC does a good job of noticing when the boards adopt the new policies. It's one reason why all the G's have to go before the PPC, because then they do train their teachers, let them know of the changes. That's one of the purposes of that, because just like when a law changes, ignorance is no excuse, right? So if a law changes, I didn't know about it, that's not a defense either, but we go the extra mile of providing the affirmative sign-off.
Right, right.
Technically, I would say it's not a requirement for PPC to do that, it is a feature of the excellent staff members that get elected by the staff to participate in it.
Okay, so GBEB, Laura, you look like you.
Yeah. It gives the district, it's not only the Code of Conduct from the state interpretation, it gives the district the right to interpret it based upon the district's interpretation of the provisions of the New Hampshire Code of Conduct. So it's an independent assessment of the Code of Conduct, and I'm a little nervous about consistency, employment, litigation, I am a little nervous. I don't know how we currently handle indiscretions, or, you know, but this, I'm not sure.
I can speak to that. So the Code of Conduct for, at the state level, outlines a set of things that are clearly impermissible in any circumstance. Those things, there's no doubt, they're usually, they're referred to as Section 5 violations, because RSA, Section 5, some RSA lists those things, kidnapping, murder, you know, things for which there is no doubt, right? There's no concern whatsoever. But there are other things it lists around inappropriate boundaries, relationships, communication, all of those things that lists as, in the Code of Conduct, are a violation. But still, the DOE has to apply their judgment to those things to determine whether an investigation is warranted, whether action as a result of that investigation leads to suspension or revocation of a license. So that's what this policy is referencing, that we also have to apply judgment at the local level. But fear not, where the DOE has no appellate jurisdiction, and an SAU, a superintendent's discretion, has appellate jurisdiction where? Right here at the board level, because I can't dismiss or non-renominated teacher without cause before this, for this board's review. So that's where. So that's where my, my judgment gets applied and checked by the board that hires me.
Okay.
And I believe if I'm correct, it hasn't come to us in a long time. If the employee then disagrees with the board judgment, they have another level of appeal to the state board of ed. Maybe, I may be wrong on that.
No, so, okay, so in the renomination process each year, the superintendent has to nominate or re, has to renominate or non-renominate teachers to the board. And the board has to either elect, has to reelect or non-reelect a teacher when they've been brought forward for nomination by the superintendent. In a case of non-renom, in a case of renomination by the superintendent, but the board elects to non-reelect a teacher, their appeal is to the state board of education.
Okay, but if, if the super, and if the superintendent does not renominate, and then the staff member appeals to the board, this, this board, our board. Is there an appeal beyond that for them if, if we?
State board as well?
Yeah.
I think it's state board as well.
So, yeah, so.
Both cases.
Yeah, so that there, there are clear appellate processes.
And, and to go back to an earlier conversation from Ms. Taylor, so a, a teacher who is on continuing contract is entitled to a non-renomination hearing for cause. A teacher not on continuing contract is not due that right. That's the, that's the, that's why we call people refer to it as tenure, but really it's continuing contract in the statutes.
So is that tenure by law or is that our board policy somewhere?
It's by law. So what RSA 18914B, might be A. It might, it might be A. It might be A, but it says, and it defines if a teacher's been with us for five years or if they previous, previously achieved continuing contract stratus in another district in New Hampshire, then three years with us.
Okay.
I've seen him recall, we ran into that last year, didn't we? Thought we did.
I don't think it was in public.
I think it was someone under the five year and they.
If so, it would not be a public conversation.
Right. Oh, scratch that.
So I, I think Laura, I, I think I know, I understand what you're saying is that you're worried about interpretation and, and what might be decided. I think the hard part is you can't list out every single little thing that a teacher or a, a certified person might violate and then have a chart that says, if this happens, then this, if this happens. You can't, we gotta have some sort of trust and concern there's an appeals process. I think we've got to rely on that process a little bit.
Right, but what does this give the district that they don't already have?
Specifically, it makes sure that the code of conduct statutes, the code of conduct educational administrative rule, I should say, applies to all employees, not just credentialed employees. So now the expectation exists for school nutrition services workers, custodians, front office staff, anybody, lawnmower, thank you, anybody.
Okay, and currently we only have a background check, which.
Correct.
To clarify that the students are safe.
That's right, at the time they're hired. We don't re, we're not, we don't re-background check every five years or every year, so.
I get checked every year.
It's not allowable in the statutes. So the record is stale the moment it's.
Okay. Thank you. All right, any other questions on GBEB?
Although ironically, it's a code of conduct violation if you don't report an arrest.
All right, how about GBEB, employment of relatives or persons with romantic personal relationships? Any questions, concerns? Nothing? All right, so that's all the G policies. Do we want to go down each one? I guess we should have been voting.
You can vote them all at the end if you want. They've all made it through. You want to, just any questions on any of the remaining?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. And are there questions on other ones?
Yes.
Laura, which one?
I don't find the page. 124.
124.
See the policy reference in case we're on the wrong.
Uh, board staff communication.
Actually, the next.
Board staff communication, yes. BHC.
Yes, I think that we have another policy already on the books that has all official, where it says staff communication to the board. It's all official communications. And then under board communication to staff, it says all official communications under there as well. And I think that's a clearer interpretation of this. To be more clear in the policy, I think that would be a nice benefit to maintain that.
To add the word official?
Yes, for communications on both of those.
Okay.
I think that was discussed at the SAU board as well.
Yeah.
And I'd, I'd like to see the last sentence removed. Therefore, discussion of personalities or personal grievances by either party will be considered on a conduct by the school board member. You could use the staff, cause the staff member to violate this policy.
Okay, discussion? And anyone have comments on that? So let's take up the, well, if you want to talk about the, either the term official communication or the last sentence.
I'm happy to.
Like to make a motion, is that what you're saying?
I'm happy to make a motion, but we could discuss it before that.
Maybe about that last sentence, maybe just, um. So we don't have any special powers when we're not sitting at this table. I understand that bit. But we are like a small community. So I would hate to see a situation where someone sees me at the grocery store and says, hey, did you hear about this situation? And suddenly someone's fired because I, I, a person who has no special powers was at the grocery store and a friend says something that frustrates, like obviously many people who come in and out of this room are personal friends of all of us, so.
I will, I will, so can I respond to that?
Absolutely.
So two things. First, the NHSBA would advise you that when someone says something like that to you in the grocery store, you say, I'm really sorry, but as a board member, I can't talk about that. That would be their advice to you about that. But second, nobody gets fired for a first infraction of a policy or a first issue around a policy. There's always, there's several steps along those, those, that, that spectrum.
So this, the language in that last sentence was different in, in the initial presentation's policy. The policy committee recommended this amended language to try to make it clear that, that the onus is on the board member to do exactly what Superintendent Steel just said. It's the, and, and the problem is not that you can't have a nice conversation with your neighbor about stuff. The problem is in, in contentious issues, this board is the board of appeal. And if you start getting one side of the story in the supermarket, you suddenly have disqualified yourself from hearing, from participating in the decision because you're supposed to sit in a quasi judicial manner. You hear both sides equally of the story before you make a judgment. So that, that's why, that's why this language is here. It's, it's to remind the board member that some things are fine to talk about. Personnel issues, in particular, the board is an appellate board and, and needs to remain pure in its knowledge about the circumstances until the official process happens. And we had a, an instance a few years ago where there was an appeal, it wasn't personnel matter, it was a student matter. And a lot of board members had knowledge of the situation from various parties, party to it. And it was hard to get a quorum of the board to sit, to hear the student appeal because there'd been so much, I'll call it contamination by discussions in the supermarket. Isle four is where they all happened, by the way. So that, that, this language here is to put the onus on the board member to do what Adam said, school board association said you should do. And to remind that the, and it's actually the intention is the onus is on the board member to remind the staff member, hey, we really shouldn't be talking about this. You know, gentle hint, let's leave this for the official channels and not aisle four.
So just so I understand, because I'm new here.
Uh, yes. But you've learned a lot.
If a staff member has an issue with a, a personnel issue, a personality issue, maybe they think Adam doesn't wear the right shoes. Okay, um, the idea would be that they would take that through the channels of their supervisor, their principal, the SAU. They could talk to Steve Chamberlain about your shoes and that would all be fine.
If there's a, so if there's a, if an individual employee has a complaint about a supervisor or anybody else, there is a policy about complaints already.
Right.
Up to and including about me, the superintendent, how you approach the board about that officially. There's an official process to do.
So they have a way to reach us if they needed it that is not the grocery store.
Correct.
Right. This, this is, this is intended to keep it on, on the up and up and follow auditable processes, really.
So the, the, there's two words in here, I think that it, there's the, for me is the cause of concern. I mean, it says unethical conduct. That says code of conduct to me, that says fireable offense. And that's the part where I think, I feel like almost goes like too far. Can we change the wording? Because if you said the first offense is not something going to go fire somebody, but when you say unethical conduct, it references code of conduct, now you're going, now it's references.
That's why we very explicitly put the, the next three words or four words in by the school board member. It's not unethical conduct, the original language was unclear.
Yeah.
And could be, could be read to mean by the, the staff member.
So now we're in trouble at the grocery store.
Yeah, 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 but it's not. But unethical conduct by a school board member is not a fireable offense. It's almost impossible to get fired as a school board member.
And remember unethical conduct by a staff member is not generally fireable. Code of conduct violations are, code of ethics is not. So that word ethical.
Maybe behavior would have been a better word.
Yes.
So unethical behavior?
Versus if conduct is a.
The word conduct is a trigger.
And what was that beautiful vocabulary bifurcating? That's a beautiful piece of vocabulary you introduced.
Change it to behavior.
Okay.
Change it to behavior.
Would that help your concerns?
I need, I need a, I need a judgment call from John. Should we amend it here or should we send it back to the policy committee and get it fixed everywhere?
John's hands up, go ahead, John. The other two boards have already adopted it as is, by the way. So they can go, they can always go back.
Yeah, 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 so we, we can make our change and they can decide if they like it or not.
John?
Yeah, I just wanted to chime in and say, I'm okay with having a, an aspirational policy as long as there's a clear distinction between ethics and conduct. What I worry about, and I, I think we've heard some, some commentary, perceptions out there in our community that they don't understand, you know, where, what the philosophy of the decision making process. And this, this extends well beyond what the policy says. And it's, it's, I fear that it, it's, it's going to hurt morale in the, among the staff and it's, it's, it's confusing to our community. And it would be nice and helpful, I think, for everyone involved if there was some statement somewhere, whether it's an administrative statement or a policy statement about what I think I heard Adam say was, you know, you're not going to get torched on your first offense or something like that for an ethical violation, like there's a process. I don't, I don't know that people understand that. You know, I don't know that we understand that because personnel decisions are not board purview. So we never really know the facts and circumstances underlying any given personnel decision. And so it's, it's easy to say, but we don't really know. So we can't vouch for that. We can't go to the community and say, no, no, don't worry about it because there's, there's this process in place or there's these policies in place to make sure that there's an equitable exercise of justice, that everyone gets a fair shake, that, you know, no rash decisions are made before, you know, facts and circumstances are understood, that there's an opportunity to cure, that, that there's an opportunity to improve performance where there's, where there may have been some slips along the way or some accidents. And that disconnect is, is a challenge right now. And, you know, I guess from the policy perspective, I'm okay setting a high standard. But maybe the concern that I have is kind of an implementation and how people are informed about, about what, how those decisions are made, under what circumstances people get on the wrong track and have an opportunity to, to make amends or to improve them, themselves and continue to serve. And that's what I had to say.
I agree.
Yeah. So.
Changing the word to behavior, I think solves, helps that.
I think that, I think, yeah. John, are you, so I'm, I'll make a motion, if anyone minds. I'll make a motion to amend the, the wording on policy BHC to say instead of unethical conduct to say unethical behavior.
By the school board.
By the school board member, that's.
I'll second that motion.
And then we can discuss. Kristy, you want to discuss it?
I was just going to say, could we also add to our motion to the word official in other spot? Or would you like two motions?
Let's, let's have that as a separate conversation. So first, we have a second on the motion, right?
So we're discussing.
So discussion. All right, let's vote to amend that piece. George?
Torres, yes.
Coffin, yes.
John?
Uh, just to clarify, this is a motion to move the, the first read to the second read?
No, this is just rewording policy, the BHC, the policy where it says unethical conduct to unethical behavior by the school board member. So we get where, so we remove the word conduct.
I have to, I, Stephanie, you're, you're, you can only get about every other word. It's something to amend a policy, I, I didn't really hear.
John, can you hear me better? Because the last line of the policy, th, this is a motion to change the phrase unethical conduct by the school board member to say unethical behavior by the school board member.
Oh, to make, to make the distinction between conduct and ethics, which has this bright line for staff.
Yes.
Okay, I, I, that makes sense to me. Glover, yes.
Very consistent with what we talked about at, at policy committee. It's just a.
Yes.
A new useful insight.
So is that a yes vote, Mr. Glover?
Yes, Glover, yes on that.
All right, Grund, yes.
Taylor, no.
Peters, yes.
Okay, so that, that will pass. Now let's talk about the official, the word official. Kristy, did you want to add something to that or?
Well, I liked, I liked what Laura had to say. I thought that was good. We don't want to, you know, if, if the staff wants to send me a Christmas card, I don't want them to have to send it to Adam first. So I liked the idea of it being official in those two spots.
I've never received a Christmas card, so I want to know if you get one before I do.
Is, anyone want to make a, a motion and then we can open up for discussion or?
Okay, I will make a motion that we add the word official in those two places that we noted.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll, I'll second, I just want to be clear that I understood where they're going. So under the heading staff communications to the board, it will read all official communications. And under board communications to staff, it will say all official board communications.
That is my understanding.
Okay, then I'm happy seconding that.
Okay. Any discussion?
No.
No. All right.
I'll make sure.
Laura?
Lauren, do you need to keep it up? Kristy, does your mic help?
Maddie said it didn't work.
Did you press the, no, no, you have to press and hold it.
Sorry, I just noticed.
There's.
I've been sitting there.
No, Maddie said she tried it and so we were just hearing.
Oh, oh, it now does.
There you go.
Hello there, John.
Hi, Kristy. Thank you for that.
All right, so Laura, Steve, you want to repeat where, to make sure we were talking about the same place to put official?
All right, so under staff communications to the board, that heading, it will say all official communications. And then under the heading board communications to staff, it will say all official board communications.
Yes.
Okay.
So we're all on the same page.
All right, so we had a, Kristy first, Steve was a second. Any discussion on that?
I want to add that currently we have a policy GBD, which is practically identical to BHC. And it includes all official communications under both of those headings.
So we'll keep it the same then?
Yes, I just.
Mm-hmm. I think that was a good catch.
Extra justification.
Yes. Okay, so let's go ahead and vote on that amendment. George?
Torres, yes.
Coffin, yes.
John?
Glover, yes.
Grund, yes.
Taylor, yes.
Peters, yes.
Okay. Okay. Any other
policies? BIB or EBB are the only two left.
Yep. Any other, any other policy questions?
Not anymore.
Is it done?
No.
Oh.
This is all that's in there. There's one, two, three, there's BDF, BGD, EHAC, all the G policies. BCB, BEDH, BHC, BIB, EBB. That's all that's in the packet.
121, which one, page 121?
That would probably be BCB.
BBBA.
Yeah. All right, do you think we can vote on all of, Christie?
Well, I just want to make sure I read that carefully, the board member qualifications on the BBBA. I forgot I had a question. As we moved past it quickly. So we said no person employed on a salary basis, but substitute teachers, teachers, well, some of these people would not necessarily be salaried, right? So if a substitute teacher was not salaried, this would not exclude that person from holding a seat on this board?
Let me, I've given the speech before, I'll give it again, I'll give, because it gives me a chance to do my favorite thing, poke at the legislature. The legislature, this is, again, 97%, the legislature's language in the law. They said salaried, and then they said, oh, by the way, we mean salary to be all these other non-salaried things. So they enumerated secretary, which is typically not a salary position in a school. They said, for the purposes of this law, we'll call in secretary salary. And that became the problem, because they, bus drivers are not salaried, I'm sorry, substitutes are not salaried. They're paid a daily per diem, they're not even hourly. And they're not in the enumerated list, so they, they could slip through this little loophole of not salaried, and not on the list of special things that we're going to pretend are salaried. So that's why we added it after the SAU board decided they wanted that.
Thank you, that was my confusion, because I was wondering when we salaried all these things.
Correct, doesn't make sense.
So it's my understanding, the, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, Laura.
It's my understanding, the only exception that we're looking for is to allow coaches.
Right, that, that, that's a thing that happens, which we can, isn't covered by any of those other circum, the law, and we, we have chosen to allow it to continue to happen. We did not put coaches in the list of prohibited positions.
Right, but the intent of passing this is everything, only a coach.
Yeah, we, we think that's the only thing that slips through. We hope the net works.
You have one last question?
So many, but, but I don't know that they need to be addressed here tonight. If coaches get out of hand, we can address it later.
Well, that, yeah, I mean, coach, coaches, I mean, they're subject to the discipline of, of the athletic, for us, the athletic director and then the.
Well, I'm just thinking, how many coaches aren't also doing something else? Do we have a lot of that?
Remember, yeah, no, most coaches either work here or work somewhere else. So if they also work here, they wouldn't be eligible to be a board member.
And if their only involvement is coach, do they still report directly to you like other, they would, right?
Well, they would report to the athletic director, then the principal, then, but yes, they'd still be.
There's still a chain of command.
I think my general impression is a lot of the, the primary coaches are, are employees of, of the SAU at least.
Right.
But a lot of assistant coaches are community volunteers.
Well, that, and a volunteer is a different animal.
Well, they still have to follow our rules.
Right, but, yes.
Yes.
Yes, they do.
Okay, so are we ready, can we vote on these as one group, or should we pull out any policies specifically?
I, I would, I think we.
Let's move them forward all, all at once. All right, so let's move to a, we have, we don't vote on a second read or a first read.
No, we just move to send it to, to.
You don't technically.
Actually, technically, we don't vote at all, you're right.
So I just thought, we don't vote at all.
So we just, we just note they've been amended.
Agenda next time.
All right.
As amended.
Moving on.
Public input, two of two.
Yes, any public input? We do not have any public here at this point. So we will go into non-public based on, anyone want to make a motion for RSA 91A32?
ANC.
ANC. I'll make that motion, how about that?
I'll second it.
Christie seconds. We'll call vote.
Torres, yes.
Coffin, yes.
John?
Glover, yes.
Grund, yes.
Taylor, yes.
Christine Peters, yes.
All right, we shall move into.